Board members, if you would please register your attendance, please. Let the record reflect that we have 11 board members present this evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome everyone to the Monday, May 19th, 2014 meeting of the Williamson County Board of Education. If you would please stand and join Board Member Janice Mills for the pledge, and please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, you may be seated. Board members, you have new pages at your place. Most of you received part of these pages on Thursday evening, which were Consent Item 1A, the April 21st, 2014 minutes, and for Item 1F, the PECA MOU. Tonight, you have at your place pages for Item 1G, school fees. These are Pages 32A, 32B, and 32C. Additionally, there is a new, the item under New Business, Item 47, Board Policy 3.210, has been sent back to policy and is not on this evening's agenda. Are there any other corrections before we move forward? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda? Motion from Mr. McLaughlin, second from Mr. Welch. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. As part of that approval, the Board approved the minutes from the April 24th, 21st, 2014 meeting. We approved Board Policies for Second Reading, 2.803, Salary Deductions, 3.2101, Public Ceremonies, Delete, 4.600, Report Cards and Grading Systems, 6.502, Enrollment of Foreign Students. We approved the Field Trip Fee Request, the Federal Projects Applications and Budgets, ESEA as amended by No Child Left Behind Act, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA Part B, and IDEA Preschool, the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act of 2006, and the Superintendent Authorizations. We approved the Change to Classified Hiring Rates for High School Bookkeepers, the 2014 Changes to the 2013-2016 PECA Memorandum of Understanding Regarding Teachers. We approved the School Fees, Outside Contractor Childcare Contract, the Extension of the School Resource Office SRO Memorandum of Understanding with the Sheriff's Department, and the Ravenwood High School Athletic Locker Rooms. The next item on the agenda is Public Comment. The Board allows for 15 minutes for public comment for members of the community to address the Board. If it relates to an item that is not on this evening's agenda, this Board will not take any action. Members of the public are asked to keep their comments to a minute and a half. Mr. Anderson, who sits to my right, is the timekeeper. He will begin your time after you've given your name and address. Please step to the podium when I call your name. He has some cue cards to keep you on task, and when you hear the timer go off, if you would please conclude your comment and take your seat. I'd like to remind the public that this is not a time for personal attacks, disrespectful or unruly behavior, or applause. It's important that every person who is addressing this body have the opportunity to hear what they have to say. The first individual is Amy Sardaki. If you would please step to the podium and give your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Amy Sardaki, 20500, Montmorel, Franklin. I am a teacher at Ravenwood High School. I teach Standard, Honors, and AP Economics. And I just want to say that I appreciate, I appreciate that the Board knows that I spent hours and weeks and months, and many of my colleagues did as well, poring over textbooks. It's one of the very best textbooks for our students, and ancillary materials, and online resources. And I just appreciate that the Board would only allow those with years of teaching experience, with a degree or two in our subject matter, with years of skill building and knowledge of the students, and knowledge of our school, St. Williamson County, to make that decision. I spent my day today reviewing economics with students and getting final exams with students, and I'll do so again, starting at six tomorrow morning. And I just appreciate the opportunity to serve, I know all of us here are just trying to serve our students in Williamson County, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Karen Clark.
I'm Karen Clark, I live at 3000 University Drive. I too am a teacher at Franklin High School, and as educators, we have spent numerous hours that, you know, kind of go unnoticed by many, going over the textbooks, reviewing the information, how is it going to be utilized best in our classroom. So I too am very grateful that you have given us an opportunity to stand in front of you, and we thank you for respecting us as educators. It's a great district to work in. But best of all, I have a student, a former student actually, she graduated last year, and her name is Laura Bentley. I would like to give her an opportunity to speak for the evening.
Hi, thank you for having me. I would just like to say that now that I've had my first year of college under my mill, I realize that I'm so prepared, I'm a high school with all of my teachers, so skilled, and I realize that textbooks are a great supplement to my education, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Ashley Flood.
My name is Ashley Flood, 3211, Montmorel, Franklin. I'm a social studies teacher at Franklin High School, and I too just wanted to thank you for giving us the opportunity to participate in this process, to thoroughly review all of the material, as my colleagues have before spending hours together in workrooms, comparing the books to the standards, to the AP College Board outlines, because we really do want the very best for our students. We care very much about finding those resources that are going to help them reach their best potential and success. And so I just want to thank you for your consideration and for always being there for us, and so I ask for my apologies. Thank you.
Next is Sherri Norton.
Good evening, Sherri Norton, I live at 6500, Park Lane, also a social studies teacher at Franklin, but I also have a junior at Franklin as well, so moved to your fourth school district. Kind of that is showing my support and belief in that situation. As a teacher, I think we have a huge responsibility, and a textbook is one of those things, things we also use tons of supplements. Really good teachers are going to go out and find things to back up a textbook, or review a textbook, and show them our size of things, and I think that's part of our job. We have spent hours and hours going over these books together, and talking about the standards, and how it aligns with the expectations. My daughter's getting a great education there, so very proud of her, plenty of her senior year, so that's just going to be good. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Next is Suzie Constantine.
Good evening, feel a lot more comfortable speaking to middle school students, so I don't have to comment, so if you don't mind that I'm reading from it, it's just easier to get my thoughts here. I've been teaching social studies for 17 years, 11 of these years I've been at Page Middle School. I would like to thank the school board and the administration for their continued support of Williamson County teachers. I'm also a parent of two elementary students, and I hope I can save my address, do you want me to do that now? 2834, Cracker Drives, in Springfield. My daughters have been in amazing education, they've had great teachers, so I wanted to thank you for that too. As professionals, we're continually drawing upon building our knowledge to develop our instructional craft, which is always growing. And it goes from college classes to summer institutes, to online resources, like the National Archives. We've sent our children on numerous road trips to historical areas and state parks and our peers, and I have emailed the director of Social Studies curriculum person so many times for help with assistance with names, to be able to teach our standards. In addition to our instructional content in training, we utilize a variety of tools and resources to provide relevant and rigorous lessons to our students. The textbook is one of those tools, but it's not the only tool. I continually emphasize to my students that as historians, they cannot rely on one source of information. The textbook is one source, one of the many tools that teachers and students use. So I just think there's a lot of time considering this textbook for our students, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Thomas Roderick.
Good evening, my name is Thomas Roderick, 1033, Co. Score here for our question. I've lived in Williamson County since 1986, and I'm a graduate of Franklin High School International Laboratory Program, and currently serve as a teacher at middle college and high school. I stand in front of you tonight in support of the textbook recommendations made by my colleagues. We worked tirelessly this year reviewing of those materials. The recommended tests will provide Williamson County students in-depth instruction, greater engagement, and differentiation that is so best for them to need. Please approve your recommendation, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Kristi Nurath. Nurath?
My name is Kristi Nurath, and I live at 14206, Beaches Circle. I'd like to start tonight by thanking you all for allowing us to have this opportunity to speak to you. I'd like to start by asking my current and former colleagues to stand up, former educators, because you can see how many people are here. In support of what we do as educators, we really feel very strongly that we spend a lot of time reviewing the materials, we care very, very deeply about what we do, and we've taken a lot of time to make sure that our recommendations are as close as we can get to exactly what the students need. And we want to thank you for your strong track record of supporting teachers and supporting our students, and we want to thank you again for supporting us in our decision, much like you would support a carpenter choosing his rubber tools, or a surgeon choosing the appropriate tools for surgery. We appreciate that you trust us to make the appropriate decision for the students.
Next is Rosemary Hood.
My name is Rosemary Hood, a teacher at Franklin High School. I live at 1150, Petalwood Drive, in Franklin. Also live at Franklin High School, where children have spots successful and well-prepared for recovery. Thank you, as all my colleagues have said, for being so supportive and caring for the good of our students, the teachers, and the citizens, and the lives of students. All of my colleagues have given, you know, a story of hours that we've spent in the back of the textbooks, just one of our students, and you have worked very hard to select what we can best support our program, and I ask you to use those to recommend and to purchase that for our students, which we continue to help the students. Thank you.
Next is Julie West.
My name is Julie West, and I have concerns for my family's safety, I don't want to announce my address after broadcast, but everybody knows I'm a district member, I can report that to you later. First, I'd like all the parents who are gravely concerned about what's been happening with their children's education, I'd like you to please stand up. As they're doing that, I will say, Article 1, Chapter 1 of the Tennessee Constitution says that all power of government lies with the people. Article 1, Section 23 says that we are to instruct you at meetings as to how you are to govern. Now, I'm sure that the teachers who reviewed books, I'm sure that they were provided with the hundreds of pages of errors that were found by doctors, by PhDs, by lawyers, or the letter from Dr. Robinson. I'm sure that they received that. Did they tell you that the tie-breaking vote at the Textbook Commission hearing cited his desire for local control, and that you could still choose anything that you wanted? Did they tell you that Senate Repression's Office remains gravely concerned about the books on the list, and her assistant is here tonight? Did they tell you Cumberland County rejected the entire list twice, and as a result, members of, representatives from another company are here in town this week in demonstrations of having a better, cheaper curriculum? Did they tell you that while there seems to be no money for teachers, there's plenty for a multinational corporation like Pearson? That in Arizona and Minnesota, Pearson misgraded 57,000 tests? That Pearson incorrectly, well, let me just say this, Wyoming, New York, Florida, Michigan, West Combs, and Virginia, Guam, England, Scotland, Wales, Iowa, Mississippi, the list goes on and on and on, with millions and millions and millions of dollars in lawsuits coming from Pearson. That you have been informed that the State Commissioner of Education, that the Senate Repression's Office, and others remain concerned about, and you don't even listen. There will be lawsuits coming, there will be problems, and it's not because you haven't been warned.
Thank you. Next is Daniella Koontz.
I'm here with a soft view, and I have so much to share, from our students in Tennessee, and I am a lady, so that our next series has seen the problems by the outstanding students, and I'm very proud of them, and I'm such a student, and I'm a student, and I'm a student, and I have accepted the path of the city, the schools, which I also have on the path. But we need to follow by the list, to pass the program, and to support the people, and we estimate to be doing these options, and I'm still working on it, because this whole work, the past one, have been easy. And I'm going to call you soon, and I hope that by then I can actually provide you some more details, and I hope that you can grab what I wanted to do, and also all the other creative work that I can do.
Thank you. Next is Hannah Tiblier.
I have forgotten my glasses, and I can't read that without my notes. Can I give my 90 seconds to Beth Burgos?
No ma'am, each individual has 90 seconds.
Okay, I'll stick it out to you. Uh, hey, that'll go. Thank you. I'm one of the parents that, oh, I'm one of the parents that, oh, driving my children to Earthersboro and TSU this summer, and I mean, loving my own personal copy of it to read through the textbooks, because as an experiment in fifth grade, I decided to host the one of my children. But because I didn't know how it was going to work, I used a public school textbook and was very upset with the content of the textbook, so that's why when all these textbooks talks started going around, I decided to go read the textbook for myself. And lots of other parents did too, and I feel like that all the volumes of material was just not, was not considered well, because maybe I don't have a PhD or a master's in teaching, or, and you have a master's in nursing, so, for Vanderbilt, so I can't read a book and know what errors are. As a matter of fact, I just had a conversation with Trudy Waters, who is the curriculum academic director at Christ Grace Academy, who says she just packed up a whole box of Pearson books and sent them back, because she was astounded at the number of mistakes in there. And so, okay.
Next is Beth Burgos.
My name is Beth Burgos, at 137, Marion Circle. I am a parent here in town, I have two children, and I'm also a family physician. Let me first thank you for your great work, this is the best county and state for schools, and she went through, I know that. And I also thank all the teachers who did all of that excellent work. I don't question anyone's attention. I know that everyone here loves our kids, and wants to do what's best for them, but I'm very concerned with what I'm hearing, even at the state textbook commission level, and so I brought excerpts, we'll take three of them, and this is the thing, which of course I never can, I still have just one minute, so, and then I try to just read, this is the letter from Dr. Jason Robinson, I hope you all have read it, but I'm not sure if others have heard it, it concerned me, and so I want to just read excerpts from it, to ask you to really, well, I'm just reading them for a minute at a time. We're talking about the responsibility that we have in our textbook adoption process. I was told that we, the commission, make sure the textbooks cover state standards. It is not our job to look at biases or inaccuracies, but just decide on a list of textbooks that are standard-based. Local school systems often will decide whether textbooks are biased and inaccurate. If they don't like the books, they shouldn't buy them. The power to select textbooks truly in your hands. And I'll skip down. As a member of the commission, I believe it's my job to do all I can to make sure that every single child, from every different background, religion, ethnicity, social standing, has the highest quality textbooks available to them. We have been presented some books that contain inaccurate information, vulgar language, inappropriate cartoons, possible social and political agendas, and potential religious bias. I'll skip down, second to my time is out. This member of the textbook commission could not in full conscience vote yes to it on the list, neither could several others. For that reason, he voted no. And as a concerned citizen and a parent of kids in this county, who I want to remain excellent in our textbooks, I would ask you to consider also voting no for this book of textbooks not to be adopted, because I think there is proof, even in other school boards, that there's question, there's questionable content, and I'm very concerned. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment for this evening. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Board Members, it's good to see you this evening. Teachers, thank you so much for giving up of your personal time to be here tonight and for expressing your perspective. Board Members, today at 4 o'clock, we had what I consider to be one of the highlights of my academic year, and that is, we celebrated 48 young men and women who have decided to enter the service after high school, some of them going on full-ride scholarships to several of the military academies, and several of them going straight into the military in the enlisted ranks. I want to thank those of you that were able to come today. If you did not see it, I believe it will be recast on our live stream somehow, I'm not sure how, but we'll figure that out. It was a spectacular event, and I look forward to continuing doing that, and I really, really appreciate your leadership to allow that to happen. I would tell you, I have never been in another district that does anything like it. So thank you for honoring our military young men and women. At your desk tonight, or at your station tonight, you will find a picture of a handful of students, and I believe all of ours are different, and so I'd like for you to look at it and just show it to the audience. You'll notice that in these pictures, the students are raising their fingers, as if identifying the number one. Well, they're holding their finger up because we have been identified as the first-ranked school district, not in Tennessee, but in all of America. And so, this is representative of their work. This is done by schooldigger.com, which ranks all school districts in America. Tennessee, I mean, Williamson County ranked number one in math and reading, and when you compare us to all other school systems that are likely, or similarly situated, with 20,000 or more students, we rank number one out of all school districts in all states. So thank you so much for all. Really proud of that moment for teachers, for students. Yes, sir, those are your personal pictures, you can hang it on your desk, or by your desk. I don't know that I can get them signed unless you want to delay school closing for a couple of days, and that would make you the least popular board member in all of The next item on my agenda, I just wanted to bring closure to the presentation that Mrs. Tidwell gave. I believe Mrs. Tidwell is in the audience tonight, at least I saw her a moment ago. We are going to be piloting an extended school day at Fairview Elementary School next year, and extended teacher learning time on their own time. And so, Mrs. Tidwell is here to answer the questions that you may have. Does not require a vote on your part, but certainly, I want to make sure you've acknowledged our intent and answer any questions that you may have as it relates to that. Joan, thank you for your leadership. I look forward to seeing your students and your teachers excel. Thank you very much. Madam Chair, the last report I'll give you relates to kind of an impromptu piece of information that I presented to the Board at the work session, and it has appeared in all the local papers now, and that is the status of special education testing for the state of Tennessee. As you know, the legislature saw fit to delay the implementation of PARC by one year, but there is another test that applies specifically to special education students, the lowest-performing special education students in the district, which comprises about 1% of that student population. Those students are physically, emotionally, and mentally impaired, or have significant challenges, and the state has signed into a consortium agreement with 24 other states, as I understand it, to administer this Common Core-based assessment to these handicapped students. We were one of the districts, we had three schools, and I think we were one of 100 schools across the state that did a pilot of that test this, in the past two weeks, and I would best describe our experience, or our students' experience, as horrific. I have communicated that to the Department of Education, I've emailed Commissioner Huffman, and have had some conversations with other superintendents of schools across the state. They share similar concerns. I have a meeting next week with superintendents from across the state to discuss the matter, and to meet with the Director of Special Education Services for the Department of Education, Mr. Joey Hassel. My position is that unless that test goes under significant alteration between now and the administration of it next year, I am not sure that I'm going to be in a position to comply with state law. position to comply with state law, and would advise the board, uh, to authorize me not to comply with state law, should that test remain, uh, intact as it is. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about any of those topics. Other than that, that completes my report.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Dr. Looney, you know, we talked a lot of this on Thursday night, but I think it's worth saying now as well, that our students should never have been put through that. I know that, um, we didn't know what was coming, but what the state has, has done here is absolutely unexcusable. And, uh, and I guess my question to you is, do you, um, have you heard back from the people that you've talked to since Thursday night on anything in regards to whether or not they are looking to change the test, give a different test, or just wait altogether and use the TCAP?
Thank you for your question. I have not heard directly back from, from the Department of Ed, um, through the TOS Board, the TOS Board, as, which I, I consist, um, I sit on the TOS Board, we have arranged an agree, or arranged a meeting with Mr. Hassel, who's the Director of Special Education Services for the state. I will say that the feedback that I have gotten from colleagues across the state is that they have had similar feedback and experiences from their teachers in the trenches, and, um, given that this, this is not the PARC test, but it's certainly Park-like, and it's a, it's a computer-based test that's 75% based on Common Core standards at grade level, um, unless the state moves away from that consortium, I would, you know, I have doubts about whether they can actually change the test at this point in time. Um, there, I guess there are other options, you know, move away from the consortium, administer the portfolio assessment one more year, I don't know, but as the test certainly currently stands, um, it's highly problematic, and, and you've heard the descriptions, you, I mean, you got the feedback directly from the teachers, and, and so, to that end, I think there, there's some pretty big lifting ahead of us, um, to get that resolved before next year.
Thank you.
Next we have Ms. Burt Song with Student and Staff and Teacher Spotlights.
Board members, as we conclude this school year, we are still celebrating our fabulous students and staff members. We have talked about this young lady quite a bit, uh, we're gonna talk about her again this month. Joyce Kaye, Breckland High School, has been named a U.S. Presidential Scholar. We are so excited for Joyce and all of her accomplishments. Now, we've been celebrating perfect ACT scores all year long, but we left this young man out, because you see, when you get a perfect ACT score, you self-report it, we don't get like a list. And so, Zach Lake at Ravenwood High School did not self-report, and so, we found out a little bit later on, Zach made a perfect score on his ACT back in September. So, we are celebrating now, better late than never, of course. Uh, so, Zach will graduate, uh, this, this coming up weekend, so congratulations to him, but we are going to celebrate two juniors making a perfect ACT score, already this adds to our increasing number, as you recall. Uh, Madison Rowett, Centennial High School, I know Dr. Webb is excited for her perfect ACT on his last testing cycle, and then we have from Ravenwood High School, Ethan Riley, Ethan also got a perfect score in his ACT, I don't even know what number we're up to, 7, 8, 9, I don't know, but I tell you what, the class of 2015 is already quite impressive. Now, we're going to celebrate youth in government, we have very strong youth in government programs, we've celebrated some of these students, uh, but these students are from Breckland High School, Avery Aaronz and Sophia Trotto, youth in government, they received best statesman in the red house, and also from Breckland High School, best bill in the blue house, Chris Perrow, Payson Clark, and Asher Abbott, their teacher is Belinda Way. From Page High School, youth in government, outstanding statesman in the blue senate, Nathan Weinberg, his teacher is Kevin Dockery. And, board members, we are celebrating a middle school student tonight, meet Stuart Muller from Woodland Middle School, first place in the state middle grades math contest. And no, this young man is not his brother, although they do look quite alike, and when Lydia was putting together the slideshow, I said, "My goodness, they look very much alike." But, they're not related. But, as far as sports goes, this is Mr. Brad Ross from Franklin High School, and he was named the Tennessee Gatorade Player of the Year, he is a soccer player. His coach is Mike Verborn. Let's talk about some of our staff members. Allendale pre-K teacher, Jamie Vanguard, named, her program was named as the highest-performing patch I-start smart program in the country, in the top 10, she was chosen for her strong commitment to ensure her students acquire the strongest possible school readiness foundation. We are excited for Jamie, but we're also excited for Betty Good at Breckland High School, who was named the national, national president of the New Alpha Theta Math Honor Society. Congratulations to all of our students and all of our staff members.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to point out, I know that in the previous couple of months, we pointed out that we had broken the all-time record for the most number of ACT scores in, in the district's history. These will add to that record, so, just, thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you, Ms. Burt Song, and thank you, Dr. Looney. Next item on the agenda is a Board Chairman's Report. I'd like to send our congratulations to Centennial High School senior Drew Welch, who recently won the SCORE video competition, and he received, he was awarded a scholarship for his video on how technology is being used in the classroom to enhance student learning. So, congratulations to Drew, who happens to be the son of Board Member Eric Welch. And Franklin High School student Christian Swear, and Independence High School student Maria Batha, won first and second place respectively at the Franklin Noon Rotary Speech Contest, and Christian went on to win the grand prize at the Rotary District 67-60 Speech Contest. So, congratulations to both of those young ladies. And then Franklin High School and middle college high school students and their staff had a banner year with the Drive Away Hunger Challenge, and both students, uh, brought pounds of, thousands of pounds of food to share with, um, Grace Works. Also, congratulations to all of our spring athletes, we've had a number of students who've had outstanding seasons this year, and so we want to wish them the best, we have a few that are still competing. And congratulations to Sarah Besand, she is the 2014 Thor Johnson Scholarship winner, she is a freshman from Franklin High School, and she won first place in the winds and brass division. And I'd like to thank our legislative committee, uh, that was made up of Ms. Hammond and Mr. Hullett and Mr. McLaughlin, and we appreciate you all and your time keeping the board informed of the legislation that was happening this year on the Hill. And to the Williamson County Association of Realtors for hosting our art exhibit for the Williamson County Calendar this year, that was a lot of really great artwork from students from across the district. I'd like to thank, uh, Officer Dominic Calvani for being here this evening to provide our security, we always appreciate your presence. And I don't know if these individuals are in the audience this evening, but, but I'd like to take a moment to recognize our three blue ribbon, blue ribbon nominee principals and their staff, Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Schwartz, and Dr. Webb, and I don't know that everybody realizes this, but when most everyone was making plans for spring break, these three individuals and their staffs were busy working to complete their applications, and it was a huge and arduous project, because Dr. Looney and I had the opportunity to read them. So, I want to thank each of you for your work that takes place in your building, and for the work that you did on those applications, and I'm certain that we will receive good news soon that you have received those awards. It was, it was, it's awesome, so thank you very much. Also, I'd like to have, uh, we have a number of teachers and staff and administrators in the audience, if you would please stand and let us welcome you. Thank you very much for being here, we always appreciate your presence and support. And lastly, um, on behalf of the board, I'd like to offer our condolences to Mrs. Vogt and her family and their loss. And, um, that concludes my report for this evening, so now we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Item 4A, New Business, this is Board Policy Revisions for First Reading. Number one is Editorial Change Director of Schools to Superintendent of Schools. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members, I do recommend this as submitted.
I've made a mistake. We'll go ahead and vote on this one, I skipped over an item. I'm getting too far ahead of myself, we'll go ahead with this one, and, and would someone like to make a motion? Motion from Ms. Mills. Second from Mr. Peterson. Is there any discussion? Did that mess you up, Mr. King? Okay. Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Okay, we will move back to the previous item, which is Item 3A, Under Unfinished Business, this is the 2014-15 General Purpose School Budget Proposal Revision. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members, as you know, in discussion with the County Commission, uh, we have, um, negotiated a, a pay increase for all county employees. The teachers, in fact, will get their roll and/or 2%, which is ever, whichever is greater. So, um, as, as you might recall, several years ago, when the MOU expired, and when they did away with the tenure law, uh, we went, we started going into collaborative conferencing, and we froze the teacher's salary schedule, so the teachers will get, um, the roll this year, or the 2%, whichever is greater. All other county employees will get the 2% raise. Uh, this budget amendment, um, accommodates for that, that request. Do recommend your approval.
Would someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Hammond. Second, Mr. Mesra. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. We'll move back to New Business, Item 4A2, which is 1.101, School Board Powers and Duties, Delete, this is on page 57. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members, I appreciate, um, Mrs. Mills and your, Ms. Anderson's commitment to go through the policy manual to look for old policies, this policy dates back to 1997, it's obsolete, and therefore we have no use for it, and recommend its deletion.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Hullett. Second for Mr. Welch. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4A3, Board Policy 1.500, Board Community Relations, Delete, on page 59. Dr. Looney?
Madam Chair, I think the BG's had a hit at this, in this year. Um, I do recommend the deletion of this 1979 policy.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Hammond. Second for Mr. Peterson. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4A4, on page 61, it's Board Policy 1.809, School Bookstores, Delete. Dr. Looney?
Madam Chair, Board members, there are other ways that we govern bookstores, and this policy is unnecessary and redundant, I do recommend its deletion.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Welch. Second for Mr. McLaughlin. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4A5, on page 63, this is 1.810, Private Schools Relations, Delete. Dr. Looney?
Once again, Madam Chair and Board members, this is a unnecessary policy, it, it serves no express purpose, do recommend deletion.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Hullett. Second for Mr. Wimberly. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4A6, on page 65, this is 3.2071, Building Committees, Delete. Dr. Looney?
Madam Chair and Board members, we have not complied with this policy in a number of years, several years ago, we hired Mr. Fortney to oversee building construction related, um, enterprises, on a scale of 10, he ranks 13 minus 3, therefore I recommend deletion of this policy.
Would someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Mesra. Second for Ms. Mills. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4A8, on page 69, 5.100, Personnel Goals, Delete. Dr. Looney?
Madam Chair, I recommend deletion of this policy.
Would someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Wimberly. Second for Mr. Peterson. Is there any discussion? Mr. McLaughlin?
I know we're going through a lot of the '79, uh, policies and deleting them, but '79 was still a very good year, I just wanted to bring it up.
For policy writing, it is.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4A9, on page 71, it's 5.502, Staff Protection, Delete. Dr. Looney?
Madam Chair and Board members, we follow the Tennessee Code and the Memorandum of Understanding and Applicable Laws as relates to staff protection, this policy serves no purpose, I do recommend its deletion.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Hullett. Second for Mr. Peterson. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next is Item 4A10, on page 73, this is 6.701, Student Solicitations and Fundraising. Dr. Looney?
Madam Chair and Board members, if you look on page 73, line 23, what we're doing in this policy, in addition to the language cleanup, we're adding student-led club or school club that is able to, uh, seek approval from the principal for fundraising, I do recommend approval of this policy change.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Hullett, second for Mr. McLaughlin. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4B. This is 2013-14 Budget Amendments. The first one is an intent to fund for Nolansville and the Mill Creek Schools. Information is on page 79. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. We're making really good progress on the designs and approval process of Nolansville High School, Mill Creek Elementary and Mill Creek Middle. As was laid out in our schedule of progress, it is time for us to go to the County Commission for startup construction funds in the amount of $40 million. We're estimating a total of $80 million to be needed. This would get all of the projects started in a timely fashion. We have bid the Nolansville High School and are currently negotiating with the lowest qualified bidder on some details. One of the big details is, well, there's a couple of big details, but the primary one is whether or not that campus will have artificial turf or not. So we're working on that negotiation, but need to get this to the County Commission for a funding approval so that we can adhere to our construction timeline to have the schools open in time. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Anderson. Second for Ms. Hammond. Mr. Gregory?
A couple of questions about this. Dr. Looney, what's your feeling with County Commission in regards to receiving funding to build these schools on our schedule?
I'm cautiously optimistic. We've been very transparent with the County Commission. This has been a journey that we've gone through for the last 15 months or so. They're fully aware that it's coming. They authorized us to purchase the land. We're beginning the road construction on the property now. I would hate to think that we've invested millions of dollars up to this point and not completed with schools. So I'm cautiously optimistic. The actual funding timeline will be contingent upon when they go to the bond market, but they're very aware of where we are in the process.
Thanks. Follow-up question, because you brought it up, concerning the artificial turf on that project. I think it would be very valuable to have whoever is proposing that present to this board in a work session so that if we want to pursue that, it'll take some selling on our part to the County Commission. I think it's an excellent idea and the private schools are all going that direction. I mean, clearly, there's a reason, but it would be a sales job. And the more information we have, the better prepared we'll be to talk to County Commissioners and see if we can get that done.
Certainly good advice, and we'll bring that to you at the next regular board meeting. If I could just add a little bit, it sounds like we're going to spend a lot of additional money. The reality of it is, it's not going to be a lot of additional money because we're getting so many credits. We're getting credits for the sod. We're getting credits for the drainage system that you have to have with regular turf. So there's a lot of credits that would be coming back our way. So the upfront cost honestly is fairly negligible on a $40 million project, but the return on the investment, we believe, is the selling point.
I coached soccer for 30 years. High school level, and the fields are such an overwhelming, and I know some of you guys know that have participated, to maintain those fields is just a tremendous effort. Time, money, sweat goes into it. So I would like to, hopefully, we can see this come to fruition and try it and see how it works.
Ms. Hammond?
And Dr. Looney? Even in the work session, I just wanted to say it for the public that you did make reference to using the artificial turf and that that's something that you all are still looking at and determining. And then obviously, from there, there certainly would be some other schools that would probably be interested in that. Can you just speak to that?
Well, it's a conversation this board has had for the last, ever since I've been here, about whether we want to go to artificial turf. And, you know, I haven't recommended and I don't foresee me recommending converting a traditional field to an artificial field at this time. But since we're building a new school, it certainly makes sense to have the conversation now. We also have been discussing the benefits of reducing how many fields we would actually have to have at Nolansville High School to reduce our overall maintenance costs. So we'll certainly bring you all the details to the board. On initial glance, it looks like it's a pretty good idea, but we're trying to vet it very carefully before we bring a recommendation. That is an add alternate to the project, so it's something that we can bring to you as an addition with credits and debits moving forward, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak before we vote?
Your vote is 10 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. Next item is B4B2. This is on page 81. It's the General Purpose School Fund. This is mileage. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board Members. As you can see, this relates to specifically mileage for occupational therapists, physical therapists and psychologists travel within the district. It's required in accordance with federal law under IEPs that have been written and do request your approval of this expense.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Mr. Wimberly. Second for Mr. Welch. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4C. This is the 2014 Adoption of the Social Studies Textbooks. This information begins on page 83. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board Members. Before I make this recommendation, I would like to publicly thank everybody that was involved in the process. We had a number of citizens that have contacted this board, have shown up to meetings, expressed their point of views, done research independent of the district, which is phenomenal if you think about it. Love having that happen. We had teachers that spent hundreds and hundreds of hours of their own time after work and on weekends reviewing textbooks, writing notes, doing analysis. Mr. Gaddis, I don't know, Tim, where are you? Mr. Gaddis read every single history book under consideration, thousands and thousands of pages, so much so that we've been kidding him that he could take the practice and start teaching history next year. Several board members have come and gotten books and reviewed them on their own. I certainly appreciate the importance of the decision. At the end of the day, I have the utmost confidence in the teachers that we've hired and the requests that they've made. There is no such thing as a perfect textbook. They've acknowledged that. Their textbook is a resource that they want to use, but they have come to the decision that the list before you is the best resource that they have at their fingertips to help get the work done. It's not the only tool, it's a tool. They've asked me to support the purchase of it, and I fully intend to do that and hope that you will do that as well. I do make a recommendation to approve the textbook request list from the teachers as submitted.
Someone like to, we have a motion for Ms. Mills. Second for Mr. Hullett. Is there any discussion? Mr. McLaughlin?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a comment and then, if I may, ask Mr. Gaddis a question. And then based on that, I may have an amendment that I'd like to offer. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Gaddis and the teachers that went out of their way to be able to go out and review these textbooks. I think they went beyond the Call of Duty. I think the improvement from the textbooks we've had before in this process is a tremendous improvement in the process. And I really take my hat off to all the people that have done that. The question I have for Mr. Gaddis is, when you gave instructions, and I assume you're the one that gave the instructions, when you gave the instructions to the teachers that reviewed these textbooks, was it based on the best academic textbooks or was there discussion also with them in regards to bias within the textbooks?
When we brought the teachers together in November for their training to discuss the entire textbook process for all those members of the committee who had been selected, we actually gave them a rubric. And at that time, Jackie Stewart, who is our curriculum coordinator, went through with them the rubric that they would use. The fourth item on the rubric, and so pretty close to the top, is content is accurate and free of bias. So teachers were asked to take a very careful look at that as they reviewed the books.
Okay. As everybody knows from the other night, you know, I struggle somewhat with this because the textbooks that I've seen and the ones that we've reviewed from last year have had bias. And I also understand that we all have a bias. I have a bias. I am who the product I am of growing up. And people talk about people that have agendas. We probably all have agendas too, based upon who we are. So I understand that when I make this statement. But I still have to be true to myself. And what I would like to do is an amendment. I would like to vote on these textbooks, but I would like to take seven textbooks and vote on them individually. That's my amendment. And I'll read those off if I may. Sociology and U, U.S. History, Post-Reconstruction.
Mr. McLaughlin, if you'll just go one at a time, so I'll have a chance to write them down. Sociology.
And U.
And U.
U.S. History, Post-Reconstruction. World Geography. Pearson World History, Industrial. The Cultural Landscape, which did make improvements from last year, but still, in my opinion, has some bias in there. Ways of the World and Introduction to Comparative Politics. I have no problem with the rest of them.
Okay, I have Sociology and U, U.S. History, Post-Reconstruction, and the third book? And is the fourth book, The Cultural Landscape?
No, it's Pearson World History, Industrial, Industrial Revolution. And then the next one is Cultural Landscape.
And then Ways of the World?
Yes, ma'am.
And then Introduction to Comparative Politics?
That's correct.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to vote on these textbooks separately. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there anyone who needs me to re-read, to read that list again? We have a motion and a second for Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? Mr. Mesra, you have...
No, I don't want to discuss the amendment.
You don't not wish to discuss the amendment? Mr. Gregory, do you wish to discuss the amendment?
I'm curious how that will work. If we vote on these seven individually, what will that do to the main issue of the whole group of textbooks?
The amendment on the floor would extract these seven books from the vote for the textbooks. So the first decision that you have to make is whether or not to adopt the motion to extract these seven from the main vote.
Well, it's not seven or nine, it's...
One, two, three.
One, up between zero and seven, depends on how the votes go. Let's go and vote on them independently.
Well, but the motion is to pull these seven for a separate vote. So the motion under consideration is, do you want to pull these seven books from the
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it is to pull them, but then vote on them individually. Okay.
Okay, so I want to make sure that I understand. You're making a motion to vote on each one of these textbooks individually?
After the motion on the rest of them is concluded. That's correct.
Well, we'll have to vote on this first.
That's correct. I understand.
Okay.
And I'm fine with that.
Okay, so you want this motion to be the collective group of textbooks?
Minus the seven. That's my amendment. My amendment is to pull the, Bill can help me with this if I'm saying it wrong, but...
Your motion is to pull these seven textbooks?
Right, from the list before the vote and then vote on them individually.
Okay. So the first order of business will be to vote on whether the board would wish to remove these seven textbooks from the original list of textbooks that were presented?
That's correct. Thank you, ma'am.
Is there any further discussion before we move on with voting on the amendment? And the amendment is to take the seven textbooks, Sociology and U, U.S. History, Post-Reconstruction, World Geography, Pearson World History, Industrial Revolution, the Cultural Landscape, Ways of the World, and Introduction to Comparative Politics, and remove these seven books from the original list. Are we ready to vote? Mr. Peterson, did you wish to speak to the amendment? Go ahead.
I was just wondering if you had seven books that you wanted to replace them with?
That's a very fair question. You know, my proposal would be to, since the time is short, is to use the textbooks that were used from last year and wait one year to bring these seven books back into the new year. That would be up to educators what they want to do, but that's the thought I've had if in my process.
Are we currently using any of these, any of those seven books right now?
I would want to speak to that recommendation, but, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, but that's not the motion on the floor.
No.
So I think...
That is not the motion, and I would leave that up to you, Dr. Looney, of how that would be handled.
But, Mr. Peterson, the answer to your question is yes. There is a problem, though, and I was going to save it just because I don't know if we're going to get there or not, but the problem would be is that the standards have changed. Tennessee has changed the social studies standards, which is why we're adopting a new
Mr. Hullett, did you wish to speak to the amendment? Okay.
Your recommendation on the amendment?
Mr. Hullett, my recommendation is to support the teacher's recommendation.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak before we vote on the amendment? If you vote yes, you're supporting Mr. McLaughlin's motion to remove these seven textbooks. If you vote no, you're not supporting Mr. McLaughlin's recommendation to remove these seven textbooks. Everyone understand? Okay. Are we ready to vote? Mr. Gregory, will you?
Your vote is three yes, eight no.
Okay, we're back to the main motion, which is to approve the 2014 adoption of the social studies textbooks. Mr. Mesra?
Thank you. Thank you. I happen to be one of the board members that took some of the textbooks, and I spent as much time as I could. And let me just say, this is an arduous task. It is. I mean, I really do commend all the teachers that were involved in the review process. I had the opportunity to read three textbooks and about an eighth of one. It was very, it was good. It was consuming of my time. And I had a, my daughter had a wedding last Thursday, and just the juxtaposition of all that was very arduous. I also had the opportunity to read the teacher reviews of all the textbook adoption. And that was extremely insightful. I enjoyed reading the comments by many of the teachers, helping to explain why they were recommending that textbook as opposed to another one. So, I wanted to say that I really do appreciate all the time, effort, and attention that was put into this process. I actually wish that I had been involved, actually been in the room, reading the textbook with one of the committees on one of the textbooks, because I would have loved to bounce ideas off and discuss things in an active process, as opposed to coming in behind you and second-guessing what your decisions were. I hope in the future, maybe we could re-look at that through board policy and maybe do something to that effect. Because the fact is that although we put a lot of emphasis and we give a lot of credit to our teachers for this task of picking out what they have to teach, you know, the textbooks, it really, when it comes down, the rubber hits the road, it's you that have to teach this, the subject matter. And for the board to come in and second-guess you seems, well, it seems condescending. It seems that we're in the wrong and we're not supporting our soldiers on the front lines. And that's not my intention at all, because I love all my teachers. You know, the, I mean, Mrs. Lawson in the second grade, she was something else. But all of my teachers, I loved growing up, and I love all my children's teachers. I mean, it's just been a great experience for us all the way through. And I never would want to make them feel like I don't appreciate the work and effort that they put into it. I know I'm rambling on, but I got a point. The point is that in reading those three textbooks, I did find errors. I mean, I found not just biases, because as some of you teachers actually put into your review, Board Policy 4.403 actually addresses that, and I love that you guys inserted that. Some of you did. But, you know, we're not to judge the books as board members according to board policy based on religious beliefs or whether their political beliefs are different from ours. And so, we actually, if we want to start doing that, we have to address our board policy first. Wouldn't you agree? And so, I'm not going to question that at all. But what I would like to question is the inaccuracies that I did find in some of the textbooks. No textbook is perfect, but here's a point that I wanted to make, is that I can't be an expert in all subjects, and I seriously doubt that an author of a textbook can be an expert in every aspect of that textbook. In particular, a history teacher cannot be an expert in all world religions. I mean, it's just not possible. I mean, I've studied Judaism, and I've studied Christianity to a large extent in my life, actually living in Israel, actually studying at the college level Judaism. And I would not say that I'm an expert by any means, but I'm probably a lot smarter than 95% of the population of the United States in that regard. And so, how could I expect a history teacher to be an expert in that if they haven't actually studied Judaism to that extent? Or Christianity, or Buddhism, or Islam, or anything else? So, my recommendation is to, I would like to amend the motion to adopt all the textbooks and pull out one textbook in particular, which is AP World History, or it's called Ways of the World. And the reason why I would like to pull that out as an amendment to vote on it separately is because in studying that book, which happened to be, you know, one of the three that I actually read, it's a single-author textbook. And what I've found is, the multi-author textbooks are much better at accuracy in the facts. And there's actually a proverb that addresses that, and that in the multitude of counsel, there is wisdom. And so, we can see that, I can see that, when I read textbooks with multi-authors, that they're much better in their accuracy, they're much better in, I don't see any biases, or if there are biases, they're counteracted with other biases. So, my recommendation is to not, to at all, if at all possible, to not adopt single-author textbooks. And, I mean, I have experience in college, when I had, you know, a professor who wrote their own textbook, and I think they were trying to make money off of it, but they were very biased, and it's not good. But with a multitude of authors, you're more likely to have a better sense. That textbook in particular, I got to read the reviews. Three teachers reviewed it, I guess the three teachers who actually teach the subject matter. Two, you know, and the rubric, you got to check out the rubric, but the rubric is, the points are allotted for each kind of question, you know, and recommendations on it. Two of the teachers ended up recommending Ways of the World. One teacher recommended The Alternate, which is actually a multi-author textbook. And like I said, I don't want to undermine our teachers. I wish I'd been in that process, because I would have voted for the multi-author textbook. So, if I could, as a duly-elected official, lend my recommendation, having read the textbook, having read the reviews, I would lend my recommendation towards the multi-author textbook. And according to the rubric, if I'd been able to vote in that process, then the other textbook publisher, Cengage, would have won. So, that's my recommendation. I hope that you will take it under consideration, fellow board members, because I actually did put the time in on this. So, that's my amendment, to pull Ways of the World and replace it with The Alternate by Cengage. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mesra, your motion is to remove AP World History book, Ways of the World, from the recommended list and replace it with The Alternative by Cengage?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Second for Mr. McLaughlin. Mr. Gregory, do you wish to speak to the motion that's currently on the floor, which is the amendment?
Glad I wrote down my concerns. But I'll keep it amended. Out of rotation here, so, no, I don't need to speak to this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Peterson, did you wish to speak? Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to Mr. Mesra's motion on the floor, which is to remove the AP World History, Ways of the World, and replace it with The Alternative textbook by Cengage? Mr. King, do you have that? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is three yes, eight no.
Motion fails. We're back to the main motion, which is the 2014 adoption of the social studies textbooks. Mr. Gregory, you were next before I took you out of the queue.
Thank you very much. I too appreciate the effort that's been put in to review the textbooks by various parties. I'm curious, how does that method differ this year from last year's review process?
It doesn't.
I'm sure Mr. McLaughlin meant it as a compliment when he said that they had gone beyond the call of duty, but I don't see that at all. I get a feeling that an extra effort has been made this year, just in the presentations that we've heard and the feedback we've been given. I'm curious if any books were not approved in the selection process?
I can't speak to the second part. I can refer to Mr. Gaddis, but I'll speak to the first statement, or I don't think it was really a question. I think the difference, Mr. Gregory, this year is there's been a lot of heightened scrutiny in the process. The reality of it is, the teachers have adhered to this process for years. We just haven't had the heightened scrutiny about an issue of reading the textbook adoptions. But when we did the reading series adoption, we went through the same thing. I mean, when we went through the math adoption, we went through the same thing. The teachers' process has not changed. What's changed is this part, where there's more public scrutiny and debate about a topic. And that it's timely. I mean, it's happening all across the state of Tennessee. So, I would disagree with the assertion that teachers haven't governed, gone above and beyond the call of duty, because the truth of it is, they always do. They do this on their time. We're not paying them to do this. They're not being paid extra to do this textbook work that's above and beyond what their normal duties are. Mr. Gaddis, do you know if there were any textbooks rejected?
There were, there were no, it's not a matter of rejecting. They had multiple choices for each adoption, each text, and so they chose the one that they favored.
Is it true that some teachers, I'm recalling a statement that you made, so I forgive, forgive me for speaking, putting you on the spot. Did we, in any scenarios, go to a textbook that was not on the list?
Yes, we did.
Elaborate, please.
So, state law allows our teachers to choose something that's not on the state-approved list. And my question was to ascertain whether or not teachers read through the available textbooks that were on the state list and said, you know, that's not what we need. We need to do something outside of that list. And Mr. Gaddis has confirmed that. In fact, we do have some textbooks that are not on the state-adopted list that are being recommended by teachers. So, I say that to say they didn't just choose from the list that was available to them.
Okay, one other question. How do you see this process changing next year with the new state law that will, I believe, require school boards to appoint a committee to review textbooks?
I believe the language that you're referencing specifically is not included in the final version of the state law. I think this summer, when we have a board retreat, we probably need to have discussions about how this board wants to deal with it moving forward. There is the possibility, but not a requirement, for the board to appoint individuals from the community.
Just double-check that, if you would. My understanding was the word "shall" was still in the law.
I might be wrong, so I'll check.
I just wanted to state this very clearly. I appreciate the teachers, the administrators, those individuals that took the time to do their job, sent us a list, provided us a list with the subject matter that they want to teach in their classrooms, that they want to provide to the students, the number-one district, the number-one district. Their ACT, perfect ACT scores. You're doing your job. It's our job to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me. One of the many components of effectiveness is efficiency, so I'll get right to the point. When it comes to their subject matter, our teachers, administrators, and staff are the smartest people in the room. They are not in the business of pushing problems. They're in the position of seeking solutions, and that's what they do. There's almost an assumption at times that a teacher stands in front of a room full of students, young minds with a textbook, and reads chapter and verse, top to bottom, left to right. That is not what happens. A textbook, if you tried to do that as a teacher with a textbook that's 300 pages, your freshman year would be two and a half years. Nobody wants that. You go through and you smartly teach the information that the students need to know to excel and become better humans, better people, better students, better thriving individuals in our society, and that's what we do. We are the highest-achieving district in the state, and one of the highest-achieving districts in the region and in the country. If it's not broke, you don't need to fix it. I highly, highly, highly support the work that all of you do, and I'm so thankful that you're all here tonight. And I'm, again, I'm just thankful that you're here, and I do support all the work that you do. Thank you.
Mr. Welch?
Bobby, you beat me to the punch, so it probably doesn't need to be said, but I'm going to go ahead and say it anyways. Number one, number one in the state, number one in the country. Number one, the best bar none. And does anyone have any doubts that the reason why is all of those wonderful people that stood up back there that run our schools? Them and the parents, the parents who actually have parents in our school system, me speaking as one, that actually have a child, that's the reason why we're number one. So, first off, thank you. I was not aware, to be honest, that there was no compensation or additional time, that this was voluntary. So, that's, wow, fabulous. Thank you. Wonderful. I do want to make additional point. PJ and you talked about looking at our board policy, and Mark talked about the process. The process is right here. It's a seven-month process that we voted on, that both of you voted on, and it passed 12-0. You approved this process. And so, it's, we go through it. It's not anything like consideration. It is step-by-step, with opportunities for complete transparency, with adequate view, with requirements on subject matter, on expertise. The teachers have to be teaching these classes. It's announced to the public through a variety of means. It is a very thorough process, with stopgaps along the way. And then we look at the school plan form. Aligned to state standards, support for differentiation, inclusion of informational text, content is accurate and free of bias, support for instructions, assessments are varied and rigorous. It goes on and on. Now, I'm not going to stand here and say it's an absolute perfect process, and as Dr. Looney said, it's, you're going to find an absolute textbook. I challenge you to find one. But it is the process we've been using, and here's the results. Number one, hands down. And if you go back a couple of years, we weren't number one. We weren't even number one in our state, and you don't have to go back that far. And it wasn't that our teachers weren't as good back then, they were. And the students were as good, and the parents were as good. But what you had was you had some political meddling on this body and limiting people in that chair from doing the job, from having that clear direction, and allowing those people out there to do that outstanding, fabulous job. And so, we've stopped doing that, and we've seen the results. ACTs, highest in the state, all-time record in the district, more perfect ACT scores than ever, six blue-ribbon nominees in the state, half of them here in Williamson County schools. I mean, of all the-- I mean, of all the schools in the state, only six were nominated, three of them right here. Accolade after accolade after accolade. Let's show a little political fortitude. I know it's tough to go out there and take a stand, and I know it's easier to just say, "Here's a problem," and back off. When you take a stand and you put your name to something, you have to defend it. And you put yourself out there to accept the slings and arrows of criticism. If you want to be an activist, and there's nothing wrong with that, we need activists in the world. We need that. It's good. It keeps people in line, it keeps people on their toes, in check. But if you want to be an activist, you're in the wrong seat. Here, you need to be a leader, you need to be decision-maker. And we've got to make the best decision. The best decision is allowing our experts, our teachers, our best-in-the-state, best-in-the-country teachers, to do their jobs. So I fully support the recommendation, and I'm gonna vote to accept these texts.
Mr. Mesra?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly hope my colleague wasn't trying to impugn my character in any way. Thank you. I appreciate that because I wasn't motivated by political activists in any way, shape, or form. And in fact, I took the time and the effort to read those textbooks and to come to my own conclusions. And I know we have a process, and I said that I would like to visit that process and board policy at some future date. And I hope, I hope that none of the teachers, or administrators, or staff ever took it to mean that I did not appreciate or admire their expertise in teaching the subject matter that they have chosen. That was not my intention at all. My intention was, as a duly-elected official, to do my job of being the final stop, the final say in this process, to vote yes or no on the textbook adoption. And that's exactly what we're doing right now. If we weren't doing it, then we wouldn't have to vote on this. Whatever was recommended would just pass all the way through. But we do have a final say, and we do have a job to do. We don't have a lot of jobs to do as a school board, you know, pass the budget, hire a superintendent, adopt textbooks. There's not a lot of jobs for us to do. This happens to be one of them, and I took it seriously. I actually tried to do the best I could to read as many textbooks as I could. And so, for anybody to question my reasonings, well, that's just unfortunate because my reasonings were solely my decision based on what I read and what I studied. Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin?
I guess I would have to add to what Mr. Mesra said. Mr. Welch, I think leadership comes in many different forms. I don't think it's being a political activist, I think, you know, or go with the status quo. I think there's many ways that we can stand out and go with the beliefs in which we believe in. I don't expect you or anyone else to walk in the places where I walk. And I've said this, and I don't in any way discount Mr. Gaddis and the teachers that went through the process. I really don't. I just know some of the things that are in some of the textbooks, and to me, they're bothersome. For instance, you know, one of the economic textbooks talks about, it took an excellent, from the information that I received, it took an excellent textbook on economics, and throughout the textbook, it puts information in there on the distribution of wealth versus the opportunity and equal opportunity for everyone to go out. I don't believe in that. And so, I have a problem with that textbook based upon why someone would take a good economics textbook and go through and put information in there in that regard. And so, those are the things, the type of things that bother me. And I think it doesn't make me any less of a leader than you for standing with the majority of the people. I think that, you know, we walk in a place that is set before us. And I've tried to listen to the constituents that have given me information within my district. I believe in that we are a republic of the people, by the four people, and for the people. If I said that right. And I think that, and I believe in that. And I've received a lot of information, and I take that very seriously too, to support the people. In no way, though, does it say that I don't support these teachers out here, what they've gone through and the extra hours they've put in. And I'll just leave it with that. I think that I totally support Mr. Gaddis and the hours and Dr. Looney and his direction in this process. I really do. I just struggle with some of the information that is in some of the textbooks, and in some cases, it's only one chapter and the rest of the book is excellent. So what do we do with that? I don't know. But I, you know, I think we have to be true to who we are, and I think we also have to be true to the constituents that speak into our lives. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Mills? I'd like to call the question. Someone like to second that?
Second.
Second for Mr. Mesra. Ms. Mills has called the question, Mr. Mesra has seconded. We'll just do a show of hands, or just say, is anybody object? Okay. So, motion carries, so the question has been called and we're ready to vote on the motion to adopt the 2014 social studies textbooks. Board members, if you'll please record your vote.
Your vote is nine yes, two no.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is 4D. This is a student disciplinary appeal to the board. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. We have a student and his family that have appealed to the board, a disciplinary case. I'm not sure if they're here tonight. Mr. Squires is here to guide the board through that process. Is the family wishing to appeal here? Nonetheless, the appeal request has been made and is on your agenda for consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Golden had provided a memorandum to you that outlines a bit of what your options are. I can answer any questions you may have about the process. Of course, the identity of the student and the facts are confidential, so we really shouldn't discuss those publicly.
Is there a motion from the board for any of the three items? Option one, two, or three?
Make a motion to uphold the recommendation of disciplinary.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Welch to uphold the recommendation. Was that Mr. Mesra? Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Welch and a second from Mr. Mesra to uphold the recommendation of the hearing authority. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 11 yes, zero no.
Motion passes. That concludes the business that is on this evening's agenda. Again, I'd like, Mr. Gregory?
Yes, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish my wife, Lisa, a happy anniversary. We've been married 24 years today.
Holy cow.
I suggest you get home in a hurry.
Congratulations. Once again, I'd like to congratulate all of our graduates that will be having their graduations beginning on Thursday. Summit will celebrate with their first graduating class this year, which is quite exciting. And also, to once again thank all of those students and their families this afternoon who were here for our military recognition and our nice reception that was prepared for them. We appreciate each of them and their sacrifice that they're making for us and our country. If there are no further announcements, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for being here.